That's a good crowd.
We're still with it.
Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Ron Jones, Christchurch.
Your prayers have been answered. I'm not allowed to preach unless I'm wearing a coat tie. Right. Father, we ask you for the wisdom like Solomon had to make right choices, tough choices, hard choices, the right choices for this community. We pray to the council, we pray to the citizens representative here, but we might operate with a real desire to do which is right, even sometimes when right isn't popular. Grant us grace and favor of your sight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're going to start with our Business Well Crafted presentation.
Good evening. I am Dr. Dana Chambers, a local family physician and representative of your Business Development Committee for our city. The purpose of the BDC, as you know, is to support the growth and continuation of existing as well as new businesses in our community. As an extension of the city's tagline, "Well Crafted," the city and the BDC established the Business Well Crafted Award to recognize and thank businesses and employees who've made a huge contribution in our community. The BDC has been honoring businesses that have been in Hickory for over 75 years, but we are discussing some new programs to recognize existing in new businesses as well over the coming years. Tonight, we are very pleased to recognize Hickory Daily Record with the city's Business Well Crafted Award. For 100 years, since Hickory was a city of about 4,000 citizens, Hickory Daily Record has served as a reputable employer and news source. HDR boasts some employees over 50 years and some subscribers who've been customers for over 60 years. We are honored to have David Millholland here tonight representing one of the families who owned the paper from 1939 to 1998. In addition, we have the new editor, Jonathan LaFontaine, here, and several longtime reporters. So on behalf of the BDC and the city of Hickory, I'm very proud to present this award to the publisher of Hickory Daily Record, Jim Dearman, and the newspaper Hickory Daily Record.
Mayor Wright, thank you for this very nice honor, members of the council. We're privileged to work here in Hickory, serve this great community, and appreciate so much the support that this community's given the newspaper. Now, this time, I'd like to ask everyone from the Hickory Daily Record, we got five or six, and Mr. Millholland, come up and get a picture for Robert Reed.
Robert, don't mess this one up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you all very much. What do you think are the odds that picture will make the paper?
Thanks to the Lord.
Yeah. Ryan Edwards, update from the University City Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. I'm Ryan Edwards, Chairman of the University City Commission, and I've been asked to speak tonight on accomplishments and the progress thus far of the UCC. In its year and a half in existence, in our commission meetings, we've spoke on a number of different areas during our meetings, gathering a lot of ideas, and we've made progress on many. But I wanted to highlight a few this evening, and as I go through these, please be aware, we're always pursuing the most efficient use of our budget and looking for dovetailing on existing opportunities and also new ones. Also, there's been some struggles to this point, have centered around the proper way to promote events that we would like to partner with to get student participation at events or potential events. But as we go forward, we've had a lot of successes and will continue, I feel, here going forward. Over the last year and a half, we've been able to take part, and will soon be taking part this Friday, in the Transfer Freshmen Move-In Day on campus. And how we take part in that is we provide all new students, be it freshmen or transfers, a T-shirt, "Welcome to Hickory," it has City of Hickory logo on it, and we're happy to, basically, the theme of it is, "We're happy to have you as part of our family." That goes to all new students, also some goodies that we're able to have a vendor booth and we're able to provide a welcome at the gathering, the main gathering, for all parents of those new students that'll be heading, held in the auditorium. We've implemented an LRU discount program with local retailers and owners of restaurants in the area, and that's consistently growing and being promoted through the campus to create goodwill with the students and the business owners here in Hickory. We, last year, put on a concert with Lenore Ryan on campus last April, which was open to the public and to promote interaction with the community and with the students. We are exploring other options this coming year, but nothing has been finalized. Internships has been another category because one of our secondary, I wouldn't say secondary, it's definitely important, but one of our secondary items to the mission statement is to create a better environment and to retain some of our young talent to our area so they don't move away. And I don't think, along with the commission, there's any one better way to do so than to give the students at Lenore Ryan will be able to promote a good, high-quality internship program for them while they're on campus. We've explored these ways and are continuously working with LR to create a centralized, efficient stream of ways to promote to the business community through Chamber of Commerce and their members a way to effectively communicate with LR and their students for internship opportunities. So that's ever-evolving. We've also explored transportation options and opportunities to make student travel for those that may not have a car or motor transportation around the city easier. That is ongoing. We've also assisted and will be assisting in the promotion of Lenore Ryan University's 125th anniversary, which kicks off here very soon. We're also supporting and supportive of entertainment opportunities that are going to be taking part in the Mill District, which borders the Lenore Ryan campus. And one of our most recent accomplishments, and you'll be able to view in just a few minutes, is a multi-use, multi-touch video that we have worked with LR in conjunction with LR and will be used this upcoming Friday for the first time in a public forum, I guess, outside of tonight, at the Transfer and Freshmen Move-In Day. And this is a collaboration between the city and LR to promote City of Hickory and LR together, not individually. So I'm excited for everyone to see that here in just a few minutes. It'll also, when I say multi-touch and multi-use, it will not only be used just this Friday, but it's also expected to be used at other student recruitment activities that LR has and also with admissions events at their lobby. And I've spoken to other individuals concerning ways, you know, to promote Hickory along with LR together. So we're excited to see this. This video was coordinated and produced by Dana Kaminski and Melissa Lovelace, and I'd like to bring up Dana and Melissa here to provide more information on this video. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to step back just for a second. If there's any questions that comes up afterwards that I could field, I'll be happy to do so.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, I'm thrilled to be back up here again to be able to present another video that we have done without the brainpower of Melissa Lovelace, who's sitting in the back end, who is our wonderful intern, who's still with us. She was able to help us put this video together. We were charged from the UCC and LR to put a video together that represented not just the campus of LR and what the students would be getting there, and we did, I think, a nice job of that, but also what Hickory offers, so that we don't want them to leave after their four years at LR. So we tried the best we could. Now, we have not been able to showcase everything that we offer, of course, in this three-minute video, but we did the best we could to show snippets of those things so that even if a student doesn't have the chance to get to Lake Hickory or to a ProDads baseball game, they can see that we have that, and maybe they will try to, or maybe they'll stick around during the summer or after school to do that. So, yeah, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mayor Rudy Wright. It's my pleasure to welcome you to Lenore Ryan University and the city of Hickory. Go Bears! Welcome to Lenore Ryan! You're accepted! How much the greatest thing that's ever happened. Congratulations!
Hey, welcome to the great, I hope you've never thought of being here.
Congratulations, you're officially a college student. Welcome to a school that's in the heart of Hickory, where downtown is only a mile away, and businesses cater to all the students that give the discounts. Welcome to study nights at local coffee shops and relaxing at one of the parks. Hickory is in a great location, not far from the mountains or larger cities.
Oh, in my free time, I really just enjoy going out to the parks and walking down the trails and exploring the foothills because I just love being immersed myself into this culture, myself on this ring, you know, just breathe my own thoughts, and that's something I didn't have before, and the fact that I get to come home to Hickory at the end of the day is probably one of the greatest things.
I think my favorite part about living in Hickory is that it's so beautiful, but it's also really close to the mountains, and it's also really close to the beach, so you can make that day trip out of the mountain or the beach.
Welcome to the nightlife near campus at one of our theaters for downtown events. Hickory is a town of cultural offerings, education, and enrichment opportunities, outdoor recreation, and an attitude toward growth.
I got jobs other places, but when I left all last summer, I started actually missing Hickory, realized that it's a great place to live, it has everything I need, I got a lot of friends here, so I decided to accept the job and just stay in Hickory.
Welcome to a university that values school spirit and education, for most of all.
Welcome home.
Welcome to a campus and community that care about you.
L R, being in Hickory, with the size that it is, you don't feel like you're leaving the community that's on campus. The minute that you say you're an L R student, when you're out in Hickory, a smile comes on somebody's face, and they're like, "Oh, what's your major?" And then they'll ask you your story, and you already feel like you're part of the family.
Oh, it'd be great, still here, so that'd be fun.
Beautiful on campus, and also in the community, first time I think we'll make this feel like it's your home.
Hey, guys, my dad, after the tour and everything, and he was like, "So, what do you think?" And I'm like, "I think this is it." And so, when I got here on campus, I just absolutely loved it. I love all my professors, and if I had a thought, I would have had me stay in Hickory because it's just, it's just a great home.
Just give it a chance. People come to L R slash Hickory, and I guess they have the expectation of it being a huge city, it's not, but as long as you look, not only with L R and Hickory, there are plenty of things to do. If you search for fun things, there are thousands of opportunities, the opportunities are plenty of us here.
Now that you've seen what Hickory has offered, I hope you enjoy it as much as we did, but we haven't built a higher future life here like many others in Lenore Ryan and Lenore Ryan in the past. Welcome to the Hickory Lenore Ryan family.
You're going to wait for your L R.
Thank you, Melissa. Remember the great video with the referees shirt and all? And tonight, her parents came here to see her work, and we want you to know, we are proud of her, she's done great. And Ryan, thanks for you and everything y'all have done. I think we're on the right track.
Sir, any questions?
What's the team going to do this year?
They're ranked in top 10.
Ranked number 10 in one and 4 in other, right?
That's right.
Biggest games, one of the first games against Westchester, they're ranked 2.
Yeah, ESPN 3.
At Westchester.
September 3rd at 6 o'clock.
All right.
Thank you.
Go Bears! And next, we'll have a presentation of the updated Claremont Neighborhood Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, Ms. Councilman, Ms. Berry, Ms. Crone. I'm here tonight representing the Claremont Neighborhood Plan at city staff. Claremont President, Ms. Jennifer Helton, was called out town unexpectedly on business, so she was unable to attend tonight, so I'll attend in her place. Let me begin by saying it's been a pleasure the last 15 months working with this group to update their plan. It's been a good experience meeting a lot of people in the neighborhood, hearing about concerns and goals and objectives that the neighborhood would like to achieve over the next plan and horizon, which is typically seven years on these plans. And it's been a really good experience, and you have a really good group of people in this particular area, and it's been great working with them, and thanks for the opportunity. To give a little geography to the area, which is basically encompasses the Claremont Neighborhood, this will be Main Avenue, that's basically our southern boundary. To the north, we're looking at Eighth Avenue. This is Eighth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, which basically becomes this part of the majority of Lenore Ryan's campus, and First Street and Center Street to the west here. A little bit of history on it, again, the initial plan was adopted in August of 2008, which is about seven years and one week to the day. Some of the initial accomplishments was done, lots of changes with regards to land use patterns and recommendations in our long-range comprehensive plan, which is known as Hickory by Choice. There's also adoption of some zoning overlays, which added some additional protections to the neighborhood, collaboration with the United States Postal Service to continue door-to-door delivery of mail, that was one of the original objectives, and also some pedestrian improvements throughout the neighborhood. And you'll see that pedestrian improvements in safety carries on throughout the plan, as you'll see here. Basically, I have seven, excuse me, eight sections to the plan, and I'll go through these briefly. If you have the documentation all in front of you, I won't go through line by line, I'll allow you the opportunity to do that, I'll just hit the high points as we're going through here. And these are basically the particular sections that were outlined in each of our neighborhood plans, there's several of them throughout the city here. With regards to land use and zoning, this is probably the most important portion of the plan that identified going through my work with the Claremont Neighborhood. And the overarching goal of the neighborhood is to preserve the neighborhood character of the area, and that is what the neighborhood is looking to do. It understands that there are non-residential users in the neighborhood for our regional salt block, university, and several businesses through there, and they understand their needs and their concerns and their wants, but it all goes back to preserving those particular residential areas. Lots of historic districts through there, and that's the overarching priority there. And to achieve that, the neighborhood came up with some strategies, new policy strategies for council and staff and planning commission to consider, and consider land use patterns throughout the area. And there, basically, to promote the use of conditional zoning, which allows more certainty as to what will happen with a piece of property. It gives you a good degree of certainty as to how a property is going to develop. The promotion of neighborhood meetings and developments getting ready to occur. That interaction between the neighborhood and a prospective developer really can aid in onset of a development project to alleviate a lot of concerns or answer questions that may arise throughout the process. And also, it's just to encourage appropriate design standards throughout the neighborhood. And again, as I mentioned earlier, pedestrian-friendly environment, there's a lot of walking that goes in the neighborhood, I've identified that, it's just being out in the neighborhood. The next is thoroughfare plan improvements. And there are several in the plan, but these two here stood out as some importance. The first item actually was a carryover from the previous plan, and this has actually been discussed in some other planning initiatives the city has conducted as of recent times. One is to actually consider the construction of a landscape median in the right-of-way of Highway 127. So that's, that comes from the committee in the neighborhood and was implemented to the plan. And also, the recommendation that when lighting, street lighting is replaced in our historic districts, that we use period-type lighting to fit in with the character of the neighborhood versus the standard lighting that you see on any street USA. Traffic safety, as far as traffic safety, again, pedestrians, that's one of the big things that's going through here, is pedestrian safety and ways to improve pedestrian safety. Identify that there is also just continual enforcement of speeding, make sure that people aren't speeding through the neighborhood, that's just a housekeeping item, if you will. I mean, it's hard to break people's habits, but if you're on people all the time through enforcement of speeding, it'll get to them eventually. Add sidewalks in strategic areas throughout the neighborhood so that linkages that are currently absent, if you have a sidewalk here and you're walking down this block and it's absent, and you picks up on an next block, let's continue it on. Let's make it more inviting to pedestrians to go through the area here, as well as just improve street lighting in the area. So if you're walking either after dark or before, before the sun's up in the morning, you feel safer in the area and you're easily seen by motorists or anyone else in the area. Community safety, as far as community safety, some of the items that came up were basically, again, speeding through the neighborhood as well as noise. And it could be kid with the loud stereo, or the kid who decides to modify their car so it sounds like a race car. It's just noise issues, whether they come in through complaints or whatnot, just have those addressed. Also, to develop some type of communication tools with the police department, and I don't mean the tool like, "I'm injured," that's called 911. More along the lines of a tool that's, if there's something going on in the neighborhood, say there's a rash of vandalism or break-ins. Yes, our neighborhood meetings do serve as a good vehicle to get that out there, but is there another means? Can we implement something using technology, whether it be emails or something like that to get out to the neighborhood to get that word out? If something's happening, then they should be aware of that. That's kind of one of those, let's look into this and vigilously see what can come about of this. Also, just to monitor the parks better for vagrancy and different items that go on in the parks, Macomb Park and Sally and Fox Park located in the neighborhood, and those are two identified areas that, just keep your eyes out as far as law enforcement's concerned, is what's going on in those parks there. The historic district, some recommendations of historic district were to, basically, and staff is actually doing some of this now, is to study if the district is to be expanded, if it is, which structures to put into it, and those types of items. So, and part of that is ongoing to some limited regard now. And also, again, encourage the continuation of door-to-door mail delivery. That was a big push throughout the plan, let's not lose sight of that, so that was introduced here also. Parks and Recreation, some of the items with parks were to provide dog stations, provide additional trash cans throughout the park so that people have a place to throw their waste when they're in the parks. Work with the Public Art Commission whenever art pieces are placed at, you see Venice Alley and Fox Park, or either I G A O Brehem, there's quite a few art pieces that are placed in the park there. Really attract them and addition to the area there. And also, replace the ID tags in I G A O Brehem, some of those are kind of worn, I think the city is getting ready to go through that process now as far as updating our which species is which and how to identify them. If any of you've been in I G A O Brehem, you know what I'm talking about there. Code enforcement, just continual enforcement, minimum housing, it's an always and ongoing item. This is done through our police department, it does a bang-up job of what they do, they do not, it's not the easiest job in the world, but they do a good job at it. And also, just review of commercial property maintenance in the commercial areas, Main Avenue, you know, the areas that may have those commercial businesses. General areas improvement, these were kind of the recommendations that really didn't fit into a specific category. Provide better trash cans at our bus stops. This bus stop in particular is one identified on Main Avenue. Also, identification of areas where it would be nice to have some type of vegetation planted and what would have wide areas of wide open meetings. And those are the big high points for the plan. I know there's a lot more in the plan, I didn't want to go through it line by line, we'd be up here for hours trying to go over, so I just wanted to hit the high points, and I closed up about the time for the train, so I'll answer your questions when we're done with the train.
Well, I would like to ask the people from Claremont Neighborhood to raise their hands, the ones who came here for this presentation, or who just happened to be here for some other reason. And I may be, it's close.
Any questions, sir?
Thank you, I think we're okay, appreciate it, thanks. Mr. Billy Sutter has requested to be heard concerning city-owned vacant lot at 121 Seventh Avenue Southwest.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, our members of the council and staff and citizens of Hickory. My name is Billy Sutter. I'm with the, here to make a presentation concerning the multipurpose center in the community of Ridgeview at the old Waddick property across from Ridgeview Library, right at Seventh Avenue and First Street Southwest. First, allow me to thank you for allowing me to be here to address you and the council in regard to the multipurpose nonprofit center for the city of, excuse me, for the community of Ridgeview. The Ridgeview community and the people who live there, including me, are not your adversaries. We encourage and support the economic growth and improvement of our city, which we share with love. This evening, my focus is on the land which is located across from the library, the Seventh Avenue, donate to the city of Hickory for some public purpose that we can benefit from in the Ridgeview community, hopefully, and the entire city as a whole, I need to add that, please. The Waddick family made a charitable gift, we believe, with the understanding that Ridgeview and the leadership of the Ridgeview community will have some viable input to the manner in which the land will be utilized. The Strive Organization has allowed me to set forth an action plan that will prolong and enhance the legacy of my vanishing community. We request your support in this project, which will be one of a kind in our city and the county. The project description will house, excuse me, numerous programs to provide training opportunities in all aspects of social, economic, educational, leadership, health, finance, housing, culinary, citizenship, sports, as well as mental and spiritual development. We will have programs to reduce criminal activity, help individuals who are seeking job opportunities to find them. Our strategy and plan is to motivate individuals in our city and county to use the programs that we provide for a wholesome, work-oriented environment by partnering with governmental and non-government entities to expand on the idea of an all-American city that Hickory has been voted for. Your support for our endeavor will uplift the leadership of our community and strengthen the goals of the city. We have a strong desire to make Hickory a beacon of hope and opportunity for all its citizens. We hope to meet with city officials as soon as possible to further discuss this project. And I want to thank you for that, now I'm going to make the presentation of having any questions. I can take them, because they have a lot of, excuse me, they have a lot of projects, a lot of programs to go with this project.
Do you want to have any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Sutter. Okay, well, thank you. Deb McNewer, problems with wildlife in her neighborhood. Deb McNew, problems with wildlife in her neighborhood.
First of all, Deb McDor and I live at 1232 Seventh Avenue Southwest, about a block from Longview Elementary School. We are so happy that school is there, because it really has improved our neighborhood. Before I get into the wildlife thing, if I can have just a moment to give thanks to the police department and to animal control. About a month or so ago, my mother and I went to the Hibachi Grill down there at Ollie's, and as we were coming out, a man was going in. He had gotten out of an SUV and he had a very young, beautiful German Shepherd in there, and it was a day that it was in the upper nineties, close to 100. And he was leaving the dog in there in the middle of the day. And I called the police department and Officer Cody, I think it was his name, I can't remember exactly, but he came out and he said he had no problems going in and interrupting the man's lunch, you know? And the dog was in pitiful shape, and, I mean, she was so hot and it was awful. But he saved that dog, I think, and animal control does whatever they can do to help us in the neighborhood, so we're applauding them. But right now, we're feeling like we're stuck between a jurisdictional problem between animal control and what they are allowed to do in the city and North Carolina wildlife and what they're telling us we can and cannot do. If you'll allow me to read this, I gave you all a copy, but it's so tiny, you probably had to have a magnifying glass. The West Hickory neighborhood is just, the portion around the school there, has been inundated with a massive eruption of wildlife. The results are becoming more and more devastating, and we seem to be caught up in this fight. Virtually nothing is being done that we can see, but I'm sure you guys are working on it, to solve the problems that we're experiencing, and now our quality of life is becoming affected. Back at the end of June and the beginning of July, a resident on Sixth Avenue Southwest, just one avenue over from the elementary school, there was a confirmed case of rabies. The neighbor was attacked by an estimated six-to-eight-month-old raccoon in broad daylight. Animal Control is to be commended for their rapid and successful capture of the coon, as well as their quickness in getting it to the proper facilities to be tested, because timing is of the essence when you're dealing with rabies. But there's always a but, and I think I'm back tonight, but that's where my kudos are ending, though. Shortly after that incident, my mother heard a noise on her front porch, turned on the light, and the next morning found a large pile of coon feces on her coconut mat rug. I have at times penchant for weird trivia, and I did research, and I can pretty much identify about six species of feces at this moment in time. We're all aware that coons are the highest percentage of wildlife to spread rabies, but on that list are also foxes, and there is a fox den over there, too. At the end of Fifth Avenue and 12th Street, it's wildlife heaven. Pardon? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. There are so many groundhogs in the kudzu and brush-infested area that the bank side of 321 is beginning to wash away. It's exposed in quite a depth of guardrail barring, and so much dirt is gone that I'm surprised there hasn't been a sinkhole or the road hasn't caved in yet. Groundhogs have about six babies per litter, they can have two litters a year. When they're six weeks old, the mother has dug out a hibernation hole for them, and they're on their own at nine weeks, and they rapidly proliferate. One evening, I was going home and I had to go down Fifth Avenue and up 12th Street and back onto Seventh for Mom's house on 13th Street there. I counted 15 on the hillside before the kudzu started growing, and there is a major fox den in there, and there are lots of raccoons in that area. A neighbor had a backyard hen and fresh hen house and fresh eggs, and his flock was violently decimated twice. He's not going for a third time, unfortunately for all of us that enjoyed the fresh eggs. But, and there, I'm surprised there haven't been multiple cases of rabies before now. But the rabies isn't the biggest problem. There are vaccines and a way to treat rabies. The thing that's the most problem that's affecting the other wildlife in the area is the raccoon roundworm. There is no treatment for raccoon roundworm. It is, you know, it is what they call a zoonotic parasite that can go from animal to human. The 12 cases that were confirmed nationwide last year, only two people survived. One of those persons is severely mentally incapacitated, and the other one is totally blocked. And in North Carolina, CSU has done a study, and they found the increased pace of the raccoon roundworm in the mountains and some metropolitan areas. In 2012, 45% of the raccoons in North Carolina had this roundworm. They're estimating that now it could be upwards of 71% of the raccoons. So when you see a raccoon, you just have to automatically assume for safety's sake that it may be infected. There are now others that contain that parasite. A raccoon doesn't die from the worm, but the others do. New studies have shown that while not prevalent, dogs can also be affected, but that prevalence rate, you know, is very low. But there's a greater mortality rate for the parasite being found in groundhogs. It's groundhog heaven at the bottom of the hill there, cotton-tailed rabbits, and even squirrels. Now, thus our predicament in the neighborhood. I dropped Mom off two days ago in front of her house, and there was a squirrel munching on the latest seed and berry residue from the latest coon droppings on her new coconut mat. I'm sorry. And morning doves are pecking at it, and we're finding them dead now. And the squirrel tried to attack Mom. We thought at first it might be rabid until we did research and police officers came out and said, "Squirrels are rarely carriers of rabies," and in my research, I found that. But the parasite is becoming very prevalent in squirrels, and they do act as though they are rabid when the parasite is affecting their brain right before they die. And we're waiting to find when we mow the grass, you know, a dead squirrel somewhere. But animal control isn't allowed to trap the animals, they can get rid of them, and Public Works can get rid of them once they are deceased. And we are told by wildlife, we are not allowed to trap the animal, that we need to hire a professional person, and we're not allowed to relocate the animals. You know, they can put bait out to give them some kind of worm treatment in the raccoons, but that doesn't help, you know, the other species. So we're caught between a rock and a hard place, and our health is at risk, and there's lots of children in the neighborhood now that go around barefooted and have pets that like to chase those squirrels, including mine, but she's on a leash, and, you know, we're at a quandary. We need your help in trying to figure out what to do, but, you know, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Any questions you guys have? I also gave you a handout of two slides from a presentation that talk about the cycle of that roundworm and how it goes to the human. So I appreciate you giving me the time to address you with this and hope that we could come up with some kind of solution. Thank you.
The Wildlife Commission has to control over trapping and relocating the animals, is that right?
Can we, how about this? How about on both these things, on Mr. Sutter's and the wildlife thing, I'd like to move that we have a discussion now, either we can do it now or at the end of the, you know, the regular business.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any more speakers at the end of our speaker?
We do have one more speaker.
Okay, excuse me, Dean.
Yeah, wait until we have more speakers.
Mr. Larry Pope is asked to speak about the Hickory Public Housing Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crone. Thanks for providing me with an opportunity to talk with you about my concerns dealing with the Hickory Public Housing Authority. I would like to ask of you, who is Uniform Capital Ventures? Who is Hickory Public Housing Authority? How did Uniform Capital Ventures come up with a checking account in the amount of $150,000 when they came to you a few months ago needing $20,000 of taxpayers' monies to apply for a planning grant from HUD to do new public housing in the city of Hickory? Are you aware that in 2012, HUD gave the deed of trust to all units of public housing to various public housing agencies across the United States for those who had applied for RAD funds? Were you, are you, in control of those deed of trust? Do you have knowledge of what is being done with those units? Are you aware that Hickory Public Housing Authority has plans on selling Ridgecrest Apartment Complex, which is close to DSS Catawba Valley Medical Center? Are you aware of everything that this group is doing? Do you know that Hickory Public Housing Authority has stated that the city of Hickory no longer appoints their board members? That their board members appoint board members to the board of Uniform Capital Ventures? I will ask you, where is this group trying to go? What is this group trying to accomplish? How much knowledge do you have about what they are doing? You are aware that in 2011, Mayor Wright and one of the board members met with Alonda Jackson after HUD came in and found misappropriation of over $200,000 and some odd $1,000. Are you aware that in 2013, HUD came back in and did another investigation, another audit, and found another $200,000 misappropriated? Are you aware that Hickory Public Housing Authority currently owes over a half million dollars to HUD? How long do they have to repay that money? How long will you, as a city council, continue to appoint the same board members to Hickory Public Housing Authority that is now going under the name Uniform Capital Ventures? What is their intentions? Can you answer that question? What are they planning on doing? Do you know? I heard one of the city council members say at the last meeting, Councilmember Patton, that she needed more information about Hickory Public Housing Authority and Uniform Capital Ventures before any decisions could be made about that group. So I ask you, are you doing your investigation? Are you aware of everything that's going on with a group that you are supposed to have control over? Are they doing what they want to do regardless of what the resolution says they should be doing that was established in the early 60s that established Hickory Public Housing Authority? Or have they gotten to the point that they know it doesn't matter to you what they do, they can do it? So I will just ask you once more, do you truly know what they are doing? Thank you.
Well, I am compelled to respond to a couple of those things. I have not heard of any misappropriation of funds at the Hickory Housing Authority. What I heard was $530,000, give or take $5,000, had been spent in a manner that HUD felt was inappropriate and requires that the Hickory Housing Authority pay that back over 25 years to HUD. That didn't make any sense to me because if that money is here for the benefit of the neediest of those of us in Hickory, why should it be sent to HUD? Where it goes into some, who knows what it goes into, some kind of budget pocket up there. But the $530,000 consisted of two things. It was something around $10,000 that was paid to Mrs. Jackson's estranged husband, according to the HUD report, for work performed. And my recollection is Mrs. Jackson acknowledged that that was improper and she made a mistake, and HUD didn't see fit to penalize her or her board in any way. They did ask that the neediest of the people in Hickory have their money taken away from them and sent to Washington. The other $520,000 was for work performed by Mr. Pope's brother while Mr. Pope was on that board, which was tabbed.
Mayor Wright, I'm saying that your facts are not correct. And Dean Amos, the attorney, I recuse myself in voting or the discussion when that maintenance contract was awarded.
Mr. Pope, you need to take this.
Alonda Jackson and Dean Amos should have known that they should have contacted HUD in Greensboro to get permission to award that contract before it was awarded. I told the federal government when I filed the complaint about the misappropriations of funds, what had happened. So I held the executive director and the attorney for them responsible for not doing what they should have done when they were supposed to be the knowledgeable folk.
Mr. Pope, you're out of order.
But I know, I don't care what you say, Mayor.
You're out of order.
I will finish what I have to say.
You're out of order.
I will finish what I have to say.
You get three seconds.
You came down to Hickory Public Housing Authority, met with Ms. Jackson after the 2011 investigation, and told her not to worry that you would make sure that everything was okay.
Mr. Pope, you're out of order.
That's why I continue to say to you, you want to make everybody responsible for the things that you, as mayor, and this city council, is supposed to be responsible for.
Mr. Pope, you get up here and you make reckless, libelous statements, and you think you can do so with immunity.
You know what? I say what I know to be true.
You say what you know to be true.
You try to say and make something that you didn't do.
Mr. Pope, you're out of order.
You did it, Mayor, you did it, and you continue to do it.
And I'm asking you to leave the building unless you go back to sleep.
Now, this is my building. I paid for it with my tax dollars. You work for me. I don't work for you. I'm your boss.
Mr. Pope.
Okay? Okay? So I will tell you, I will not leave this building. I have a right to be here. This is a public building, a public meeting, and I have a right to be here. If you don't like what I have to say, then I will recommend to you, as I did once before, you don't make a comment after I leave the podium. You keep your personal opinion to yourself.
Mr. Pope, I'm going to take three minutes.
I'll second that.
No, no, hang on, hang on. Mr. Pope?
Yes, sir.
You always get an opportunity to say what you want to, when you want to.
That's right. This is a public meeting.
And.
And I say what I have to say.
And you normally abide by the rules that everybody else does and you have always been upstanding and appreciating the rules. And right now, you're violating the rules and the mayor has declared you to be out of order.
Well, you know, the mayor.
Now, just hang on a minute.
He tries to control.
Section, listen, section 256.
What I say by calling me out of order.
Mr. Pope, we.
But, you know, I have a right.
You have a right to speak within the rules.
To defend myself.
And let me tell you.
And if the mayor wants to pick a fight with me, then I am man enough to say what's on my mind.
Nobody's here to pick a fight with you, sir.
Okay. The mayor always tries to.
No, he doesn't.
Every time I leave this podium after speaking, he's got something to say.
You're well aware that section 2.56 of the code says, "Any person allowed to speak who shall depart from the subject matter under discussion or who shall make personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be declared out of order by the mayor or by vote of council and barred from speaking further before council unless permission to continue shall be granted by a majority vote of council under such restrictions as the council may provide." That's our rule. The mayor has declared you out of order and according to our ordinance, you are now barred from speaking until further permission is allowed by council.
Well, Mr. Layle, what I know is that it does not matter what the mayor says. You will always support him like a rubber stamp and I'm finished. I mean not say anything else because you know my position, what I recommend to the mayor and to you and of council members.
Mr. Pope, Mr. Pope.
That you say whatever you have to say while I'm at the podium.
This is John Crone speaking to you and you know I have a great deal of respect from you, for you.
I have to do and I appreciate you, Attorney Crone.
And I have just given you what the rules are and the mayor has done his best to give you an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Berry, we have a, we have a meeting scheduled with the Housing Authority, correct? In the not too distant future?
Not with the Housing Authority per se.
But with some of, some of our members and some of their members. Let's take the minutes from these comments and, and bring them up at that meeting. Please. You mean bring, bring Mr. Pope's comments?
Yes.
Well, there are a couple of things that I don't want people to leave here with a misimpression about. One of them is this thing that I ever met with anybody and said, "Don't worry, we'll take care of whatever happens." I don't predict the future. I have enough time with the past. I'm not going to predict the future and say everything will be taken care of. But Mr. Pope, and I know this is direct, hey, his comments were pretty direct and we let him say what he wanted to say, right? Mr. Pope makes these libelous, outrageous statements. He will not let me finish. For example, I was going to say to you, the reason that I didn't go overboard with excitement and the rest of council and city staff did not, over the $520,000 to Mr. Pope's brother. The reason we didn't was we didn't have any reason to think that anything intentionally had been done wrong. We were told that Mr. Pope had always recused himself from voting and so we did not decide that we were going to get ourselves involved in that and get somebody kicked out of there. If I'd had a chance to finish my comments, you would have heard those. But there was never anything about $200,000 plus misappropriated. That's not true. There was nothing about $200,000 more misappropriated. That's not true. It was $530,000. And the $520, I don't believe the 10 was misappropriated, but I think it was ill-spent. The $520, I never even thought was ill-spent. But I was told that Mr. Pope's brother said, "I gotta have more money because I can't do this job for the amounts you're paying me." And the Housing Authority said, "We are not going to pay you anymore." Okay? That's, that's the reason that the whole city didn't hear us screaming from the rooftops that money was stolen from the Housing Authority. So the reason we have to respond is if we leave comments like that, just laying out there, it makes it look like to the person who's not informed that there's something we're scared to address or that there's truth to it. So, yeah, I will address it, okay? And I can get mad too, but the difference is I'm not going to throw out reckless comments and, and I'm going to try to deal with it in the most professional manner I can, given that I'm mad. With that, I agree with Mr. Layle, you made the motion, right?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
I'll second that.
And we had a second. Does anybody have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. We will take up.
I want to know if she can.
Mr. Layle, I'm, I'm going to paraphrase, but we're going to take up every comment that Mr. Pope made as well as other issues that might come before.
Yeah, I made the motion that we, at the conclusion of our regular business, that items not on the agenda, we consider matters as are related to speakers that requested to be heard.
It's sort of hard to make the right decisions on things, but I think most of you sitting out here would say, based on what you've heard about the Housing Authority, that we, we should not have made a trip to Greensboro demanding that they all be thrown out. That's the call we had to make. And I'm still not happy with HUD. Why in the world they want that money to go that way, I don't know. And I haven't quit on that $520,000. Okay, what is next? You wanted, you wanted to make a motion about conversation concerning Mr. Sutter's comments?
Well, I, I said, yeah, let's just talk about that after we finish up the meeting.
Oh, after we finish up the meeting.
Well, after we finish, yeah, that's not on the agenda.
And I seconded it and it passed.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're through with, oh, back at the end, okay. Do we have a motion, a motion to approve the minutes of August 4th?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Zagoroli, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be taken off the consent agenda? Move to be approved.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. The informational item, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One informational item is to report your travel to Raleigh on August 12th to the historic tax credit legislative rally. And that's the only informational item this evening.
Okay, I'm going to talk briefly about that when we get to other matters at the Appointments, I'd like to appoint, I'd like to appoint Jeff Mitchell to historic preservation.
I'd like to appoint Cliff Moon to the citizen advisory committee.
Any other appointments? I make a motion, we approve the appointments?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Matters not on the agenda. I believe the first matter we were going to discuss was Mr. Sutter's comment.
Yeah, and I, I may be, I may have been asleep at the wheel, but, Mr. Layle, can you make your motion and have a second for matters not on the agenda this time?
Yeah, I, I move, we, we have discussion with regards to the comments that the speakers have made that addressed council at the beginning of the meeting.
Motion by Layle, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Are you looking for me to kick off?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so I want to talk to you, I guess first, or I'd like to interend the discussion with everybody about with, with regards to what Mr. Sutter proposed. Of course, I got the letter as a pre-read in preparation for the meeting and didn't, did not, until read this letter, did not understand that there was some movement underway to develop some of these programs, the training center, the mentorship, all those types of things. And I think that all that is, I think that's to be encouraged and supported any way we can with, with regards to the city. I don't know that we're at the point now that we could, you know, appropriate $4 million, you know, as part of our bond thing yet, but we need to, I think, stand in support of the programs that they have going forward there at Ridgeview and to the extent at some point in the future, it makes sense for the city to participate, you know, at, with the property, with infrastructure, with even some of the building, with other partners. And I think Mr. Sutter mentioned the county and I'm sure there's other partners too. I, I'd just like to keep that door open, I guess is what I'm saying.
I agree with that, of course. I would also recommend that perhaps Mr. Sutter and his group, whoever that might be, also would have conversation with the bond commission. I know that they, they meet on a regular basis and obviously those, those meetings are also open to the public. I'm not sure whether or not they've heard his concerns and requests and I think that that would certainly be a first step and a place for where he should, should make his requests. But I agree, I agree that any way we can support and enhance any of these programs that are discussed that we have before here, it would certainly be to our benefit.
Are our hands tied on the bond money as far as use?
Understood, we couldn't do anything that was not actually presented in the bond.
Yeah. I don't have the ballot language in front of me, but it generally, it speaks to transportation and economic development. It actually has a listing underneath those of what, what would be considered in those categories. So that would be parameters that you'd have to be looking at and working with.
So that's not what was presented to the voters? A multi-purpose?
That, that wasn't included.
Correct.
I'd also be interested in knowing if there's any grassroots efforts from anywhere else to raise funds for these things that are outlined.
I don't know about grassroots efforts to raise funds, but I did share with you all a couple of weeks ago in my communication that there is an effort right now that you are participating in, the city's participating in with Catawba County. I can't even list all the nonprofit organizations that are involved, but basically to look at the provision of service for those who need employment, who need housing, who need education, who basically are dealing with issues related to poverty. That, that analysis process is, in its first phase, the initial phase, was to bring in kind of the stakeholders. That meeting took place last week, facilitated discussion about who does what and setting some broad parameters and goals as to how, you know, they can work better together. I think there is an interest by all of these parties of figuring out, how do you create more of a one-stop shopping opportunity? And one of the things that has been identified is how everybody is scattered all over the county and how difficult it is for people who need those services to actually access those services. I mean, transportation is a huge issue and how do you get to all of the various places you need to go to to be served, to, you know, improve your situation? So I, I would anticipate that one of the recommendations that will come out of that is some type of looking at, how do you, how do you get everybody under one roof or at least a representation of everybody under one roof? Which when I, when I read Mr. Sutter's letter, I thought that was interesting, that in some ways, that's what's proposed in the letter is, is a location, a single location where you can avail yourselves of, of a lot of services. So I think that process is going to be ongoing for the next couple of months to evaluate how you do that. So I think there's lots of opportunity to continue that conversation and figure out how do we work together and, and, you know, then start talking location and all those kinds of issues, so.
What's the size of that property there? I might have looked it up.
I looked it. Point one seven?
It's small.
It's not very big at all.
Yeah. Point one acre, that's something.
It's not even an acre.
Pardon me, did he say they're three?
Okay, okay.
Looks to me like it's about an acre.
Yeah, it's kind of a narrow strip that sits right across from the library.
Like that between the library and Mount Piscataw.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
On Mrs. McNur's quest, is there any way, and I learned a long time ago, the big P-word, and you and I talked about this a lot. I mean, is it really setting up a big precedent if we were to, I mean, if everybody's hands are tied, if we were to hire some sort of extermination management company to, to do something? Are we setting ourselves up for, for future claims? Ma'am?
Yeah, that, I, I really am not prepared to answer that. We've had a little bit of conversation just, just since, since Mrs. McNur called me on Friday and we didn't get a chance to talk, but the issue that we're dealing with is that all, all of the wildlife issues, as she pointed out in her comments, are governed by the Wildlife Resource Commission. So we can't just direct our officers to go out and do stuff or we're in effect directing them to break the law. So we'll have to talk about that and see if there is something along those lines. They do grant to property owners that there is a process you can go through to say, I need, you know, I've got these, I've got wildlife on my property of, you know, it's this, that, and the other. And they will grant a limited trapping permit to let you as a private property owner trap wild animals that are on your property. Obviously, we're not talking, we're talking about maybe public property. I don't know exactly where the bank is or where we would need to, to go to do that. So we'll have to, we'll have to do some more homework on that before we really know what.
What do you do with them once you trap them?
What's that?
What do we do with them once we trap them?
Yeah, typically, they're, they're taken to the county animal shelter and put down.
Yeah, and the other thing is, I mean, and this has been, and I appreciate Mrs. McNur bringing this information because I, and once again, I, this is news to me, this, this raccoon parasite, and particularly if it's as pervasive as the literature that she provided. I, I would think that the Wildlife Commission would be encountering this in other locations. So it may be with some, we can help get some guidance from then.
Well, and I know, what I'm going to say here is not going to be politically correct in any way.
All right.
But that has not stopped. But it says, how many, 12 people in this country were killed by this parasite last year?
Ten, 10 out of 12 that were diagnosed with it last year nationwide died from it. And the other two, one is totally blind and the other was really bad, didn't make it back to state.
Well, and, and those are 12 tragedies.
Yes.
Twelve tragedies.
And we're also concerned about the road and 321 and that pit of cud zoo and nastiness there. It's a big fire hazard. Someone would flick a cigarette out a window of a car now going southbound on 321 over into that pit and it hasn't rained and been real dry.
Mrs. McNur, in fairness, I got to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
Because we don't allow. Ms. McNew, in fairness, I got to cut you off because we don't allow that and that's, sorry, okay? Well, I think we need to look at this and talk to wildlife, the wildlife department, and see what we can do. The point I was trying to make with that is, across this country, you would find thousands of things that could go wrong that kill 10 to 12 people a year. And it's not politically correct to say that because we'd like to not have any of those. But I think that might be the case with our raccoon feces, okay? But let's see what we can do and see if that neighborhood has a worse problem than other neighborhoods or if the city of Hickory has a worse problem than other people and how does Wildlife Commission recommend that we address it.
We do have a lot of population in Hickory. See the field in my backyard last, this last month?
Okay, I was going to just add a comment about the trip I took to Raleigh for the benefit of the taxpayers of Hickory. It's frustrating to get down there. They are trying to take away the historic tax credits on the basis, well, why do you let one company gain at the expense of other taxpayers? But I feel like it's not at the expense of the other taxpayers when it's creating jobs and it's doing the kind of things for our community that the Lyerly conversion is done, the Moretz Mills conversion is done, the Holler conversion, the Z-Loop improvements, the Piedmont wagon, I could go on and on. So we went down there to fight for those tax credits. Well, what we hear is it passed the House 98 to 15, but somebody with a lot of power has a committee and it's just stuck in his committee and he's just not turning it loose because he doesn't like the tax credits. That infuriates us, right? Then the second thing it infuriates us is the redistribution of sales taxes because they want to hold, they want to hold the line and redistribute it in whole or in part by tagging it on to a bunch of bills that most of us would say, "Yeah, that's no brainers. We need to pass those." So those are the two things that are infuriating. They get buried in committee or they get tagged on to something else and voted on, you know, and then I've had people in there say, "Well, I may vote for that, but it's going to hurt to do so." Just separate the things and don't hurt so much. That's just sharing with you the frustration of going to Raleigh.
Well, it's so frustrating to me that the tax credits are taking old buildings that are not being used, they're remodeling them, they're re-upfitting them, and they're putting people to work, whereas before, they're just, they were sitting there. I mean, you look at all the buildings that we have in town here that we have redone, they weren't getting any taxes from those buildings or they were just minimal taxes anyway. So it just seems ridiculous that they don't have the foresight to take a look at what improvement that tax credit program has made in the other ones.
It's been a real question with the tax credits and what it's been able to do for Hickory and with David is, it's, I think, very short-sighted of them not to see what it has done for our community and could do for other communities.
These would not have happened if it wasn't for the tax credits.
Yeah, I agree.
They wouldn't have happened and it's not, I will tell you, the people involved in these deals say there is no windfall game. It merely makes it feasible to convert that old building to a usable project rather than just tear it down and start over, which is the American way, it seems like. Well, I think we're doing the right thing. I don't believe that they could have put anything like as nice a structure and made as dramatic a difference as they've done at Lyerly Mill by flattening that property and starting over.
And look at the money that they put into it, out of their own pocket.
Yeah, it's a tremendous investment.
Besides the tax credit.
And they did it so they could keep the jobs in Hickory and not take them somewhere.
Yes, sir.
On the sales tax thing, and this is just a comment or commentary, I don't know if you guys have noticed this, it seems like there is a resurgence of energy opposing this measure. You know, we're starting to, I'm starting to see it on Charlotte media because, you know, it affects Charlotte. And they've come out with some stories about, you know, the tax dollars going to other places. And I think it's unfortunate that it's sort of cast as a city versus rural kind of thing because I don't, you know, I think we all are all in state, certainly, the, it doesn't make sense, cities are our growth generators in this state right now and it doesn't make sense to penalize them. It is, and it will just increase, actually, I think it will increase, Stevie, overall to me, seriously.
Since you are speaking to the party live, I agree with you. I'm not going to go into all the things the other side says. Anything else?
I have one comment. Everybody set your DVRs, your Tivos for Saturday morning at 10 o'clock because our number one angler, Mick Berry, will be on TV.
Maybe, we don't know. I may have had to edit it out.
They were on the boat for nine hours for a 90-minute program.
Yeah, that's tough.
But Mick Berry talked about the Greenway and the Riverwalk and so it might be, I think it's on Fox.
Fox Sports South.
10 o'clock, so said it, throws some sleep late and see our number one angler.
Motion going to closed session?
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Zagoroli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We will go into closed session and we'll attempt to adjourn our meeting or conduct any business that comes up.
Yeah, they want to revitalize the ones they own. If somebody else's building, they don't give a damn about revitalize.